Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and indivisible and just.
Present.
Counselor Lopez.
Here.
Counselor Rodriguez.
Here.
Counselor Brown.
Here.
Counselor Bishop. Counselor Tejada.
Present.
Counselor Abadana.
Present.
Counselor Robinson.
Yes.
Counselor Pilatanda.
Yes.
Counselor Garcia.
Present.
Counselor Ray Coopero. Eleven members present. We have a call. First order of business, joint public hearing. The joint public hearing with the Board of Assessors regarding the FY nineteen tax rates.
This is a public hearing regarding the FY nineteen tax rates. Anybody that wishes to speak, please come up and address the counsel. State your name for the record.
Thomas Ambrosino, City Manager. So, Madam President, councilors, I made a presentation to you on November fifth. I'm not going to reiterate that. I just want to say that, based on the information that I presented to you, and based on the valuations, what I'm proposing tonight is for the counsel to take two votes. One vote would be to do what this counsel has done for each of the last twenty-five-plus years, which is do the maximum possible shift for residential, to benefit residential taxpayers, which is a hundred and seventy-five percent shift to commercial industrial properties. That's the most that's allowed by law. This provides the biggest benefit to residential taxpayers. So that's one vote. I'm requesting that you do approve the hundred and seventy-five percent shift. And the second vote is to adopt a thirty percent residential exemption. That is an increase from twenty-seven point five percent that currently is in effect for fiscal year eighteen. If you adopt the thirty percent residential exemption, then the residential tax rate for Chelsea in fiscal year two thousand and nineteen will be fourteen dollars and twenty-six cents, and it will result in the various average tax changes that I noted for you in my attached chart. And they are a decrease for the average tax bill for all condo owners and modest increases for other residential parcels. That would still leave you room to go up to a thirty-five percent residential exemption, which you can do slowly over the ensuing tax years.
Thank you, Mr. Ambrosino. Anybody else wish to address the counsel regarding the FY nineteen tax rates? Going once, going twice, that portion is closed. Public speaking. Anybody that wishes to speak, please come up. Please state your name and address for the record, and you have four minutes.
My name is Manuel Tessa, and I live in, at eight ninety-three Broadway in Chelsea. I am here today to say that, at the public meeting, annual talk with the city manager, Mr. Thomas Ambrosino, it was held in Brown Middle School, and I attended that event as part of the youth commission. And I asked him about education and students. And going topic to topic, he told me about his request for money grants to, for Chelsea High School. And what I felt right after he said it, it was like, that, I just really felt like, after what we had been doing with students, I, me and my classmates, we had been organizing multiple events to try and fundraise. We had been getting, trying to talk to companies and doing all those things. And after he said the words about the request that he made, it really made me feel like, like I was per se safe, because I knew that someone was listening to us. And Mr. Thomas Ambrosino, he really made me feel like we were being paid attention and that the work we were doing was paying off. And I really want to say that after all the work that we had been doing, we were, we were kind of feeling like we were alone, but now there's a chance that the city is, is going to be with us. And I just want to say that I'm really thankful for that. Even just the fact that you're considering it, it really makes me feel really, I want to say, safe, because I know that the city is listening to us as students and that our voice as youth is not being undermined. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak? Okay. Going once, going twice, that portion of the meeting is closed. Approval of the minutes.
Approval of the minutes of November fifth, twenty eighteen.
Communications from the city manager.
We have a copy of a communication from the city manager. Stabilization fund request for Chelsea High School field. Dear councilors, I am writing to request an appropriation from the school capital stabilization account to pay a protective mat, mat for the turf field at Chelsea High School. The cost is approximately one hundred and seventy thousand dollars. This removable plastic covering will allow for greater use of the field for non-sporting events, including allowing for an outdoor graduation ceremony for the Chelsea High School class of twenty nineteen. As you know, we are in the midst of a three-plus million dollar upgrade of veterans' field at Chelsea High School. The first phase of that project replacement of the artificial turf and the new track is scheduled for completion this fall. A second phase involving lighting and restrooms will commence in the spring. The new turf field has an eight-year warranty, but that warranty is voided if certain uses occur on the turf, including large static crowds, spiked heels, chairs with four legs, et cetera, basically all but prohibiting the use of the surface for any non-sporting events. One method for eliminating this problem is to purchase a removable protective surface for the turf, which is how the problem is handled in many large artificial turf stadiums across the country. However, we did not budget for such a protective service in this project. At the request of the school department, I am asking that the counsel approve the additional funding for this protective surface. Although this product, product will need to be procured through the competitive bid process, the school department did seek out a quote to get a ballpark figure. Based upon this quote and anticipating some potential price increase for a purchase date in early twenty nineteen, we expect that an appropriation of one hundred and seventy thousand dollars should be sufficient. The source of funding requested is school capitalization account. This account was specifically established for these types of school department capital expenditures. Because free cash will likely not be certified until late winter, leaving insufficient time for the city to seek an appropriation, advertise for the bid, contract with the winning bidder, allow for the product manufacturer, and ensure delivery for graduation preparation, free cash is not an option here. For the reasons set forth above, I respectfully ask that the city council approve an appropriation of one hundred and seventy thousand dollars for the purchase of this protective surface. The proposed order is attached.
Counselor Bishop.
Committee on Finance.
Okay.
The next communication from the city manager. Fiscal year twenty nineteen tax rates.
You, you, we're missing the CAPPIC communication. It was supposed to be the first one.
I don't have it.
It was the first communication on the agenda.
I don't have it.
You want it here?
Good. It'd be nice if I had it.
Yeah.
Okay.
So it's the first one.
Okay. Next communication from the city manager. CAPPIC funding request. Dear councilors, I am writing in response to the request that the city council consider additional funding to CAPPIC to assist with fuel assistance and other winter needs. Please note that the city does provide support to CAPPIC for its fuel assistance efforts. Specifically, global oil donates to the city fifteen hundred gallons of oil each winter for distribution to needy families. And the city redirects that oil to CAPPIC for redistribution, for distribution. Because distribution of this fuel is completely discretionary, this effort allows CAPPIC to assist Chelsea families who don't always meet the stringent federal requirements for fuel assistance. In addition, as you know, the city has other contracts with CAPPIC as part of our efforts to address substance use disorders that allow CAPPIC to provide other services to Chelsea residents during the winter. If the city council wishes to do more for CAPPIC to supplement its existing fuel assistance program, it would require additional funding. At the moment, the only source of such funding is the stabilization fund. I would be happy to consider a further contract with CAPPIC for additional fuel assistance using stabilization fund money, if that is the will of the council.
Counselor Coopero.
Accept and file the communication. Like to speak on it?
Under suspension. You have the floor, counselor. Please speak into the microphone.
The city manager should speak to CAPPIC and see if we can get extra funds, because from what I understand, the heating, the heating this year is going to require more heating, because it's getting colder, as they say, and there's a lot more people applying. As I went down to see what capital was about, the lines, there's tons of people applying. So that means a necessity for our city, there's more and more. So the city manager should talk to CAPPIC and see if we can get money from the stabilization fund and give more funds to CAPPIC for the needy people of our city. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. Next communication?
Final communication from the city manager. Fiscal year twenty nineteen tax rates. Dear counselor, in follow-up to my November fifth, twenty eighteen presentation on taxes and valuations, I am resubmitting, for your consideration, the document showing the impact of four options presented for the residential exemption. The option, the options.
Counselor Tejada.
Wave the reading.
Okay. And accept and file a communication under suspension? Thank you. There'll be something coming up under your business, right?
Communications and petitions to the council. We have a copy of a communication received from the parking clerk, Jeanette Sintron White, regarding the actions approved at the October thirtieth, twenty eighteen Traffic and Parking Commission meeting.
Accept and file a communication under suspension.
Committee reports. We have a copy of a committee report of the city manager evaluation received from the Subcommittee on City Manager Evaluation.
Motion.
Accept and file.
Accept and file a communication under suspension. If there's no objections.
Thank you, counselor. Seeing no objections, so moved.
We have a late communication.
Any objections to a late communication received from a resident regarding the Ennis project? Okay.
Can you read, can you read into the minutes?
Into the minutes, not out loud?
Out loud, also.
Out loud, okay, okay. Do you want to read it? You want to read it? I'll read it. For full transparency, I'll read the whole thing. Please, please read this at the meeting, Monday meeting. After looking at two of Chelsea, two articles in the Chelsea Record, when will Watch Street see the proposed view of this new development? Looks like there's a cutout across the street from my house, and I want to know what is planned to go there. Also, just what is a traffic and parking study? How will a traffic and parking study improve the lack of parking in our area? Two hundred and twenty-six parking spots on site is simply not nearly enough, and the neighborhood cannot accommodate any more vehicles and the additional traffic. The ninety-six units need to be replaced, but the additional over two hundred more units and possibly three to four hundred more vehicles parking in our already overpopulated neighborhood city is insane. Watch Street was made a one-way a few years ago because it's so narrow and overcrowded. Watch Street gets a lot of traffic, especially during peak hours, and many drivers ignore the, the one-way. Do you councilors and city manager realize that all exits and entrances in our city are gridlocked? And this is capitalized, but I won't yell. Right now, what are you trying to do to us? In an emergency, it's nearly impossible to navigate through our city now. Please don't take the offer that this developer is offering. It's not for the good of our city. I have already voiced my opinion to Paul Nowicki and Al Ewing. Paul lives on the Ever Chelsea land, and Al doesn't even, doesn't live in Chelsea. So this project will never negatively affect them. Donna Repici, Ninety Watch Street.
That was an order from Counselor Brown.
Counselor Brown, yeah, accept and file.
The next order is second readings. What introduced by Counselor Bishop. Whereas pursuant to section two dash ten of the City of Chelsea Charter, the city council has the authority to establish an annual salary for its members. Now therefore be ordained by the city council of the city of Chelsea as follows. Amen chapter two administration, article three officers and employees, section two dash sixty, effective upon the city council term commencing January of the year two thousand and twenty, members of the city council shall receive an annual salary of eight thousand dollars.
Counselor Bishop.
Madam President, I move roll call.
Move to roll call. Would you like to speak on it?
Yes.
Okay. Have the floor.
Thank you. Us councilors, including everyone here in this room, all work very hard for the stipend that they are given, and this order is not to indicate that they are not working hard. They are, I know. I know the hours that this job entails, and it's not easy. I served here many years ago, and if anything, over the years, the job has become more demanding than it was twenty or thirty years ago. So I introduce this order not to say that you guys and myself don't deserve it. What I'm trying to say is, if you listen to what happened tonight with the, the tax rate being set and other issues that are coming before the board, there's no question that we have to start thinking about cutting our budget. Nine hundred thousand dollars in, in free cash was used to balance this budget that we set the tax rate for this evening. What happens when we don't have the nine hundred thousand to put in to balance the tax rate? What happens when we reach the maximum and we can't adjust the numbers, fudge the numbers, play with the numbers, whatever you want to call it, so that it's, we can't increase the deduction for residential owners? The tax rate's just going to go up, 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 once we reach that maximum. There's only one solution. The federal government is facing the same thing. You have to cut the budget. You have to cut things out. Where do we start? If we're going to cut things out, where do we start? There's so many things and so many departments that should be cut, in my opinion, and have to be cut in order for us to survive another hundred years. We should start right here. And I'm saying that because, you know, in the last few years, the salary for the city councils has been increased a total of seventy-five percent. It went from eight thousand to fourteen thousand. To me, I think that was too big of a jump. I think when you look at the fact that there used to be nine, which was too many then, now there's eleven of us. Eleven times fourteen, you're talking a hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars a year just for the city councilor's salary. So I would like to see it roll back to where it was, which is eight thousand dollars. Now, we could hire a policeman, we could pay a policeman's salary, we could pay a fireman's salary with that money that we're going to save. We must cut the budget, there's no question about it, and anybody with any sense would say, gosh, what we're doing every year is not sustainable. We can't keep doing this. Something's got to happen here. So I intend to go forward in the next year, in the next budget round, to cut every department. And I'm hoping the votes are there for that, and I'm hoping the votes are here for this this evening. Again, I don't want anybody to take the feeling that I'm talking about them not deserving this money. They do. I know that they earn it, I know that they put the hours in. My feeling is, it's just too much, and the budget cutting needs to start right here. Thank you, members.
Thank you, Counselor Bishop. Counselor Pilatanda.
Unfortunately, I don't agree with my fellow colleague. I agree with one thing, yes, we all do work hard as city councilors. We do, you know, we're out a lot, we're at homes a lot with our families, but to cut the city council pay back to eight thousand dollars, I just don't agree with it. I mean, at this point, there may not be a council someday if you keep cutting the city council's pay. You cut it down to eight thousand dollars, the school committee makes more than us. Crossing Guards make more than us. Currently, right now, the city of Everett, they get paid twenty-five thousand dollars a year, plus a two thousand dollars a year stipend. The city of Malden gets paid seventeen thousand five hundred salary. The city of Revere gets eighteen thousand, plus health insurance. We don't get any of these things. My salary that I get here, who pays for my cleaning allowance? Who pays for my cellphone? Who pays for my gas when I go to events? Who pays for the events that I have to attend for? Who pays for when I have to go out somewhere out of the city to attend another event that's, you know, reluctant to what we do here? So I don't agree we should be cutting anything. If anything, we should be raising the city council's pay to twenty or twenty-five thousand dollars. If you want to start cutting, you know, to balance the budget, okay, let's start cutting the Crossing Guards. You want to take money away from them? Do you want to take money away from the school department? You want to take stuff away from the other departments in the city that may need new computers? You want to take stuff away from the school department? You know, we give them a five million dollar raise, and top of that, to keep the school system going, do you want to take money away from them? I mean, where will it end? At some point, it'll be below the eight thousand dollars, you won't have a city council here. So it's something else to think about. Thank you.
Any other councilors wish to speak on the matter? Counselor Robinson.
Just for, just for the record, I know we mentioned eight thousand, but I don't ever remember us receiving eight thousand. Back in two thousand and eight, the salary was eleven thousand. And then in two thousand and nine, it went to fourteen thousand, which was voted by the previous council. And any pay raises won't take effect until the next city, city council. So it wouldn't have anything to do with us getting any raise or any, any increase. I just wanted to make that clear.
Thank you, counselor. Anybody else? All right, so this is going to a roll call. Can you just clarify?
Roll call. Yes would be to approve the reduction to eight thousand dollars, and no would be not to approve it. Counselor Vito.
Yes.
Counselor Lopez.
No.
Counselor Rodriguez.
No.
Counselor Brown.
No.
Counselor Bishop.
Yes.
Counselor Tejada.
No.
Counselor Abadana.
No.
Counselor Robinson.
No.
Counselor Pilatanda.
No.
Counselor Garcia.
No.
Counselor Ray Coopero.
No.
Two in favor. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine opposed, motion defeated. New business. First order under new business introduced by Counselors Abadana, Rodriguez, and Robinson. Order that the city manager explore to purchase of event decking system for coverage of Chelsea High School field as part of twenty nineteen CIP.
Counselor Abadana.
Yes, I will be withdrawing, along with my co-sponsors, Counselor Large Leo Robinson and Counselor District Eight, District Eight?
Seven.
Seven. That's a, yeah, Mayor Rodriguez. This was written or thought of immediately after the last meeting, when we had the entourage and group from Chelsea High about their plight and wanting to have their graduation outside with the support of the school committee. So in light of the letter that we got tonight, that the city manager is exploring with the superintendent for something, we withdraw it, and we'll wait for that to come out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next order introduced by Counselor Vito. Order that the joint Subcommittee on Conference be held with the City Council and School Committee with OPEC, Office of Campaign and Political Finance, to discuss proper filing methods, procedure guidelines, filing dates, to ensure full adherence to state law.
Counselor Tejada moves to accept, adopt under suspension. There are no objections.
Suspension, okay. Next order introduced by Counselor Ray Coopero. Order that when the city manager hires new employees, he implement the same procedure used for residential tax exemptions to prove residency for new hires.
Counselor Coopero.
Under suspension, no objection, I'd like to speak on it.
Objection to...
So we'll take a roll call.
My Counselor Abadana.
He objects to the first reading?
He objects to the first reading?
Say my roll call.
So roll call, yes. Not, you can speak on it, yeah.
We, the residents that live here, have to go through a, a long process to get residential exemption. Yet, you can come from anywhere and say you live in this city, just say you live here, and nobody checks it out, and you get hired. So if the residents of our city who live here and have to go through all these procedures, why shouldn't they? You want to work here, you say you live here, you should go through the same procedure as we do when we prefer residential exemption. There's nothing wrong with that. If you've got nothing to hide, why wouldn't you do it? If you don't live here and you want to work here, you're taking away a job from someone that's here, that wants to work in our city, that lives in our city. So if we, the residents, have to go through it, you should have to go through it too. And it doesn't say that you're going to take away jobs from people, you're going to, you're not going to hire the best people. That's just saying, if you claim Chelsea preference, you show that you live in Chelsea, plain and simple, just like we have to. You should be doing the same thing. Thank you.
Counselor Abadana.
And I appreciate the effort made here by Counselor Coopero. However, as it's written, city manager hires new employees, he implement the same procedures used for residential tax exemptions to prove residency for new hires. Basically, you're saying that the only people that can work for the city of Chelsea is if you own a home. So if you rent, as it's written, letter of how it's written, if you use the same procedure as residential exemption, which requires you to own a home and prove the evidence, you are essentially saying, you can only work for Chelsea if you own a home. No, that's how it's written. So I know that's not the intent, but that's all written, and that makes no sense, so I'm voting no.
Okay. Did you have a question, Counselor Pilatanda? Yeah, actually, Mr. Ambrosino, would you mind addressing and talk about what the process is?
The procedure.
The procedure. Same thing.
I think that would be a question better left on Mary Lou, because she does the...
Mary Lou, would you mind coming up to the microphone and, and just letting us know what the current procedure is for residential tax exemptions?
On the spot.
Thank God you were here.
My name's Mary Lou Ireland, I'm the assessor, and in order to qualify for a residential exemption, you have to own and occupy your home here, and you have to provide many different forms of proof for that. License, passport, some sort of identification with your photo, photo ID of some kind, preferably a license. We check your registration against the registry of motor vehicles, and your license against that as well, to make sure that it's actually correct. And it has your address on it, as being a resident of Chelsea. You supply your mass income tax, just the front page that says that you actually filed your taxes from here, in the year prior to the exemption. And we have a special program that we use, that's called the DOR Exchange, where we submit those social security numbers on your tax form to actually prove that you did file your taxes here, because you can write them out with a social security number and not actually have filed. So it doesn't come back with any other information other than, yes, indeed, they did file. You have to provide the electric bill or gas bill or just some sort of phone bill that has your mailing address.
Just out of curiosity, the DOR Exchange isn't limited to just homeowners, it's just wherever you filed your taxes. That's what you're looking for, the address?
We only provide, we only put in people who are applying. They have to provide their social security number on that tax form, and it's something that's very secure. So, and we also have a program that we use to verify that whatever information that people supply, and it's called, it's by LexisNexis, it's called Accurant, and it tells us if you own property in other places. So if you own property in Florida, let's say, and you have a homestead in Florida, you cannot receive the residential exemption here. So it's a very thorough check. We found that a lot of people were receiving it that didn't really live here, so we've saved a lot of money by doing this.
Thank you so much. Thank you. All right, back to business. Do any other, do any other councilors have any questions or, or comments before we go to roll call? Um, I think, Counselor Pilatanda, you have a question?
So I understand what Mary Lou just said, but from what Mr. Abadana is saying, is saying that this year, is saying that people have to live here in Chelsea, that have to be owner-occupied in Chelsea. Is that the case or not? That's where I'm confused.
I think that what Counselor Abadana is trying to say, that what we're trying to prove when the assessor is asking for documentation, is that they actually live here, and they own, because they want the exemption, so they have to prove that they own their home. So to use that same process in hiring...
But is that the case, though?
I, I mean, I guess that's... I how do, I mean, I guess that's what you have to kind of determine on your...
What do we ask Ms. Cheryl to clarify?
I don't, I don't think...
No, no.
I don't think, I don't think we need to do that. Hold on one second. Councillor Tejada, you have something you want to say?
Um, Roy's right, uh, uh, Recupero, you're right as well. And your intent is fantastic. What we're talking about here is the process that you're asking cannot be done because you're putting that residential exemption thing, which specifically speaks to homeowners in Chelsea that are owner occupied. So what we're looking for here is a clerical clarification. So you, you probably need to just rewrite it in a different format in order for it to be able to be applicable to what you're looking for.
Hold on, it's, uh, we have a roll call. We have a roll call vote on the floor.
I'm just unsure of this because, again, I use the word procedure and thank you for clarifying that with us. If we adopt this here tonight, we're essentially saying that if you want to get hired in Chelsea, you have to be a resident of Chelsea.
No, home, own a home.
Beyond owning a house, but you have to, pretty much by using all this information, you ha- literally have to be a resident of Chelsea. And we have yet to pass any law to state that all hires, new hirings, have to be residents of Chelsea. So I'm kind of confused about if we can legally do that. Thank you. And maybe we can get a clarification from the...
Okay, so I'm, I, I... Cheryl, would you come to the mic and just, for the sake of clarity, just... Can you go to the microphone so people at home could hear you, please?
I think the confusion is, is that the way as it's written, the residential tax exemption proves that not only do you own your home, but you, the information provided is a year and bit. So if you're a new resident to Chelsea, this is not going to prove that you, you reside in Chelsea the past year with the same documentation we all as a homeowner in Chelsea have to go through. If I moved to Chelsea six months ago, I would not have an income tax that showed that I lived in Chelsea a year ago. I, um, don't have a deed to show that I live in Chelsea. Do I have a bill and other matters? Yes. So I think, um, as to whether or not people have to live in Chelsea, as you know, city councillors, you did pass a policy whereby the city manager should hire residents of Chelsea for positions that are open, um, subject to collective bargaining constraints. So we do have that in place. This is attempting to, um, tell us how to verify that they're residents. Legally, this violates the charter because it's telling us how to do our job, but second of all, it's, uh, second, that it's requiring us to do so the same way we do under the, um, residential tax exemption. So the basis is, is that it's, um, we could probably work around this, the city manager and his staff, as to verification policies of residency, if that's what the city council wishes us to do.
And also, for the record, the city charter does require that employees aside from public safety are Chelsea residents.
Not the city charter, the administrative code.
Administrative code, sorry.
The administrative code does, and this, um, city council waives those who are not residents...
Well, the city manager waives.
Well, he, he seeks a waiver through the city council, yes.
Okay, thank you. Are we clear? Good? All right, roll call. Can you clarify the vote, please?
Uh, if you vote yes, you...
Oh, wait, wait, wait.
Violates the charter. I ask that you rule this out of order. You just said it.
I, I would say that we just move it to a roll call vote. Yeah, on the roll call vote.
Well, at this time, I'll ask to lay it on the table.
Why can't we just wrote it down?
Next order introduced by Councillor Recupero, Councillor Lopez, ordered that this, it's laid on the table.
Councillor Robinson moved to lay it on the table.
Audit that the city manager implemented a policy where any company that does work in the city of Chelsea has to remove any equipment that is movable and has rubber tires after work hours. This equipment cannot stay in Chelsea overnight.
Councillor Recupero? Councillor, your order.
Yes, I'm going to adopt under suspension and there's no objections, I speak on it.
You object to the first reading or to the under suspension? So, roll call?
Yeah, roll call.
Okay. Go ahead.
Councillor objects to everything that's in favor of the people.
Speak, speak on the order in front of you, Councillor Recupero, with this is supposed to be a short meeting.
We went to a subcommittee meeting and Lou, the gentleman in charge, told us...
Mamalat.
Lou Mamalat told us that anything that was movable that had tires could be moved and didn't have to stay overnight to, we already went through that, to, so the residents could have a parking spot. There's no need to have all these big dump trucks put in these areas. If we're going to allow that to happen now, when all the big projects happen to our city, what are you going to do? You can't keep, I can understand, I agree with his point where he says anything that has nut wheels, you have to log and move it back and forth. Yes, I don't disagree with that, but if a, a truck or any vehicle could be moved, why do you store it on our street where parking is essential? We don't have any. So why do you store it? You could take it with you. We're not telling you to lay, take away all your equipment. We're only telling you to take away, just like he said to us. He's the one that told us that anything that was movable should be removed. So that's all I'm asking for, me and councillor, and you're asking for the pieces, they could be moved to be moved. You don't have to leave them overnight. You're taking away very precious parking spots for the people. So that's going to happen all over the city, any kind of development they do, or any kind of work that they do for the city, then they're going to leave all these trucks? Well, take them. They have tires, they could be moved. They're not stationary, they could be moved, so take them with you. Thank you.
Councillor Lopez?
I see so many contractors that come and work for the city, leaving trucks parking on our streets where our people need those parking spaces. And, you know, it's, we don't really have enough parking already, and for them to leave these trucks in our streets, I think that's not fair for our people who live here in Chelsea.
Anybody else wish to speak on it? Councillor Abadana?
Once again, I understand the intent, but the way it is written, a policy where any company that does work in the city of Chelsea has to remove any equipment that is movable and has rubber tires after work hours. So if Chelsea's pizza has a car that delivers pizza after hours because it does work in the city of Chelsea and has rubber tires, it can't park in the city of Chelsea. Any vehicle that works in Chelsea, if they're delivering for anybody, according to you, any company that does work in the city of Chelsea, you've basically included anyone. I don't understand why it's so broad, you are ru- it's, it's not specific. So a steamroller can park on the streets of Chelsea because it doesn't have rubber tires. A tractor trailer, like the tracks of a tr- of a tank, can park anytime because it doesn't have rubber tires. If you work in the city of Chelsea or it's a vehicle that's registered commercial vehicle in the city of Chelsea and does work in the city of Chelsea, yet is parked on a private lot, according to you, it's still in the city of Chelsea, it can't park in the city of Chelsea. You are not writing it specifically to how it should be. I understand your intent, but you need to work on specific and then present it. But that's, unfortunately, you're opening yourself up to a can of worms, and he shouldn't be doing your job.
Anybody else wish to speak? No, Councillor Recupero, he didn't mention you by name. Councillor Brown?
Um, again, we did attend a subcommittee on the same issue and this matter here. Um, we, I thought we left there with a good conversation with the DPW director and Lou and the city manager, and I thought that we had formulated our concerns and our, um, dislike about this type of equipment being left on the streets after work was done at a specific time for a spes- specific amount of time. And for us to come back a few weeks later and then direct the city manager to implement something without giving the DPW director and the city manager, present something to us what we can, what our concerns were, is pretty much unfair. I understand what the councillor is doing, and I know he means well, and I know he wants to alleviate, um, these huge trucks and he want to open up parking for this area which is really in need of it. But we actually spent a lot of time in the subcommittee and we still, I mean, I thought we left there with an understanding that they were going to work on a project, on a procedure, and talk to these businesses to say, hey, if you come here, you sign this contract, the city council is requiring that if you're not going to use this equipment, don't bring it. If you're going to use it within the next few days, you can bring it, but you cannot overnight it for the next three or four weeks. So I think we're just putting too much pressure on the city manager to go back and start talking to these, um, equipment, I mean, owners and these companies. And again, it's a cost effective. When they have to come back and forth into the city of Chelsea to bring a, a rig or, or a piece of equipment back, it costs us. So I, I would ask that the city council maker of this, um, order, give the DPW and the city manager a chance to do the job that we asked them to do. Thank you, Madam President.
Anybody else wish to speak? Councillor Garcia?
Thank you, Madam President. Um, I, I think what I'm going to say somewhat has been covered. I really appreciate the intent of Councillor Annie Lopez and Councillor Giovanni Recupero, but I think that the matter on hand and the issue on hand is the technicality of the language and the impact it can have on subgroups. So yes, you know, part of my district is being affected by all this construction work. Um, you see it all the time, you should, you see it in Sherrill Street, you see it in Maverick, and yes, we're trying to improve these streets. And unfortunately, the spill over effects of that is all these construction equipments that are coming in and are taking up space, and we understand that. And I would love to support anything that can improve the quality of life of our residents, but when something is so, uh, broad, and as Councillor Abadana has been able to point out, um, it's so broad, you know, maybe, maybe making some tweaks and maybe saying any construction company and really targeting the, the groups that you want to not be in our streets, that would be, uh, more valuable for us and it would make more sense. But when it's something so broad and we find ourselves in a situation where we can affect other subgroups, I cannot vote in favor of it. So, um, I do hear you. If you can tweak it, I'd be more than happy to revise it and support it, but right now, as it is written, it comes down to technicalities. It's going to affect other groups. I do not want to affect local businesses, I do not want to affect, uh, police officers because I also believe it was mentioned that they also have, uh, rubber tires.
Or steamrollers.
So, so steamrollers, so yeah, you know, um, so reality is, I understand the intention, but it comes down to technicalities, I can't vote in favor.
Thank you, Councillor Garcia. Councillor Bishop?
That the city manager implemented a policy where any construction company doing work for the city...
Doing work for the city. So that it reads that the city manager implemented a policy where any construction company doing work for the city of Chelsea has to remove any equipment that is movable and has rubber tires after work hours. The equipment cannot stay in Chelsea overnight.
Yes, thank you.
So now, oh, I think Councillor Abadana wants... You can't speak, though, because I'm not letting everyone else speak. On the amendment, okay. Okay, okay, okay. On the amendment.
It's, should, again, many times companies rent parking lots and such and are using areas as layovers. So what if a construction company rents a parking lot from a individual or someone and they're parking their vehicles or equipment in a private lot, it still forbids them from parking in the city of Chelsea? So you should say on the streets of Chelsea, very, very specific, because if I own a constr- a construction company, I'm doing work in the city of Chelsea, but I'm parking underneath the Tobin Bridge or whatever, it shouldn't say that it can't be in the city of Chelsea.
Are so, are you proposing an amendment to the amendment?
I'll allow the maker to make an amendment, I'm just pointing out the mistakes.
Okay. Councillor Tejada?
I, I, I also think that one of the things that we have to watch out for is, um, hurting ourselves by our choices, you know? So a caveat that should be put in there as well is to make sure that removing the vehicles will not damage the streets, because some of these vehicles are rather large and they, they, you know, they could cause potholes and things of that nature, soften the ground. So that caveat should be put in there as well.
Permission to speak from the chair?
Go ahead.
Please? I think that this isn't something that we should be handling right now on the floor and that should probably...
That the clerk can read it?
I think, the other thing is that because I have been involved in some of these conversations that happen and I understand how much of a pain it is that it takes up a lot of parking spots, the fact of the matter is that it can delay construction projects and cause the city a lot more money. I have seen them co- completely bombard our streets. I have also seen them take some stuff off. I think to ask them to remove every single equip, piece of equipment that has movable tires might be a reach. I do believe there's a happy medium, but I don't, I think this is a little too absolute, and I think that we really need to go back to the drawing board and talk about it. Okay. Wait, I think Councillor Bishop, what, what do we have here?
Yeah, but an amendment offered by Councillor Bishop that the construction doing business in the city remove, uh, from the public street, remove the, uh...
From the public street, yes.
And Councillor Robinson, what are you saying?
Can have a discussion and talk about what the cost factors will be.
All right, so now we have a new amendment to go to a subcommittee, which the matter was already in subcommittee, but, yeah, on the amendment, Councillor Recupero?
We already went to conference many times with this. We had a conference on it already. Okay, here's, here's a new thing, right? The city has an ordinance which says you cannot leave commercial vehicles over a certain height on the streets, regardless of what it is. So what are we going to have, two sets of rules? One rule for the people that live here, they, if they own a commercial truck or any size truck, they can't park it regardless of what it is. Construction dump trucks are over the limit, so we allowing them to use what they can do. So you telling the people, you own a truck, but you can't put it there, but you, you can leave it there. So we are two standards, you can't have two standards.
You're, you're supposed to be speaking on the amendment to go to a subcommittee. Do you have something to say about that?
Well, we already went to a subcommittee. We already had a subcommittee on that.
Thank you, Councillor Recupero. Okay, so right now, what's before us is a roll call vote on the amendment proposed by Councillor at Large Leo Robinson to send this matter to a subcommittee to be further discussed. Can you clarify what the vote is?
A yes vote would be sending it back to the subcommittee.
Okay.
Uh, Councillor Vido?
Yes.
Councillor Lopez?
No.
Councillor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councillor Brown?
Yes.
Councillor Bishop?
No.
Councillor Tejada?
Yes.
Councillor Abadana?
Yes.
Yes. Uh, Councillor Robinson?
Yes.
Councillor Perlatanda?
Yes.
Councillor Garcia?
Yes.
And Councillor Recupero? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight in favor, uh, three opposed. Motion going to subcommittee. Next order introduced by Councillor Recupero, ordered that the city manager look into eliminating one tier out of the water system and combine the first and second tiers together.
Councillor Recupero?
Suspension, there's no objection.
Councillor... Roll call. And here we go, would you like to speak on it?
Yes.
Go ahead.
And what this does, it helps out everybody in the city with water. What it does is it conserves the water, by you using less water, you save. By using more water, you pay. So the idea is to conserve the water. And, um, it eliminates, it makes you pay. The tier system, if you look at your bills, it has three tiers or four tiers, wherever, but it has it. So what it does, it combines the first and second tier to a lower rate. It makes you pay lower if you go underneath the twenty-five thousand gallons, whatever it is that we use. So what this does, it, um, helps the people of, everybody of the city, the whole everybody, commercial, non-commercial, whoever uses water, helps them. If they preserve the water, they pay less. If they use more water, they pay more. So the, the, the whole point is, the more water we use, the more the city pays. The less water we use, the less the city pays. So it's a good thing to give this to the people. It's, it's a, it, it doesn't, you're not giving anybody any more than anything else. Everybody's using the same thing. So you're using, everybody's equal, you're not being special to nobody. Everybody's the same. Everybody's the same. That's all this does. It looks into giving everybody the same thing.
Thank you, Council Recupero, Council Avellaneda?
Thank you. I know that we've already had a very spirited discussion on water rates, discounts and such, and we do have a motion in place to have a subcommittee to discuss the water rates with DPW, and have a thorough explanation, and it would be, I think, in our best interest to have ideas such as this brought up in that subcommittee, discussed there, not to have this brought up separately. So we're already scheduled to have a subcommittee where we can have this sort of proposal, and whatever other proposals, once we have full information. We already found out that the previous order that we debated was, in fact, illegal, and I don't, just don't want to go down that road again, so I'm saying, why keep on introducing new orders when we actually haven't had a subcommittee on the conference? Let's have the conference, let's discuss this, let's discuss this proposal, and then hash it out, and then come back, you know, and do the work, the way it's properly supposed to be done. That's all I'm saying. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, a roll call vote. Can you please clarify the?
The roll call is requested by Council Avellaneda, audit that the city manager look into eliminating one tier out of the water system, and combine the first and second tiers.
It was introduced by Council Giovanni Recupero. You said it, Avellaneda, yeah.
Oh, yeah, no, but the roll call's been requested by Council.
By Council Avellaneda.
The roll call's on the order.
On the order.
So if we vote now, is we should?
It's rejected, yeah.
Right, thank you.
Council Vido?
No.
Council Lopez?
Yes.
Council Rodriguez?
No.
Council Brown?
No.
Council Bishop?
No.
Council Tihara?
No.
Council Avellaneda?
No.
Council Robinson?
No.
Council Pelletanda?
No.
Council Garcia?
No.
Council Recupero? Two in favor, nine opposed, motion denied. Next order introduced by Council Vido, whereas the city council's employment agreement with the city manager calls for yearly evaluations and potential cost of living increases, whereas the council president created a subcommittee for the city manager evaluation of Council Vido, Robinson, Bishop, Garcia, and Brown, and whereas the city manager evaluation found him good in all areas of responsibilities at the November 13, 2018 public meeting, whereupon the entire city council was invited to attend, therefore be it hereby ordered that the city council of Chelsea approves the evaluation presented by the subcommittee, and grants a 3% cost of living increase as of July 1, 2018, to the city manager.
Council Bishop? Move it to a roll call? Does it have to go to a second reading?
No.
Second.
Or a roll call?
You could do a roll call on this.
A roll call?
Roll call's good, yeah. No discussion?
Any discussion? Council Bishop, do you wish to speak?
No.
Anybody else? Okay.
This is in conformity with the existing contract, that's why.
Got it.
Council Vido?
Yes.
Council Lopez?
Yes.
Council Rodriguez?
Yes.
Council Brown?
Yes.
Council Bishop?
Yes.
Council Tihara?
Yes.
Council Avellaneda?
Yes.
Council Robinson?
Yes.
Council Pelletanda?
Yes.
Council Garcia?
Yes.
And Council Recupero? Eleven in favor and unopposed, motion adopted. The next order introduced by Council Vido, audit that a subcommittee be formed to finalize the existing city manager contract negotiating the new manager contract.
Stay under suspension if there are no objections? Except a file? Or a roll call?
Roll call? A roll call? This is for, for the city manager evaluation? So what, wait.
This is just a request to form a, a subcommittee to start the negotiations for the new contract.
Top unanimity under suspension.
Sure, Garcia, okay.
So moved.
Uh, let me see, ordered by all members of the city council, that the Chelsea City Council adopt a minimal residential tax factor for FY 2019, with a 1.75 commercial, industrial, and personal property CIP shift factor.
Council Robinson?
Council Robinson. A yes vote would be to adopt. Council Vido?
Yes.
Council Lopez?
Yes.
Council Rodriguez?
Yes.
Council Brown?
Yes.
Council Bishop?
Yes.
Council Tihara?
Yes.
Council Avellaneda?
Yes.
Council Robinson?
Yes.
Council Pelletanda?
Yes.
Council Garcia?
Yes.
Council Recupero?
Yes.
Eleven in favor and unopposed, motion adopted. Next order introduced by all members of the city council, audit that the Chelsea City Council adopt a 30% residential exemption for FY 2019.
Council of Avellaneda moves for a roll call vote.
A yes vote would be to adopt. Council Vido?
Yes.
Council Lopez?
Yes.
Council Rodriguez?
Yes.
Council Brown?
Yes.
Council Bishop?
Yes.
Council Tihara?
Yes.
Council Avellaneda?
Yes.
Council Robinson?
Yes.
Council Pelletanda?
Yes.
Council Garcia?
Yes.
Council Recupero?
Yes.
Eleven in favor and unopposed, motion adopted.
And that will conclude our meeting. Public announcements? Council Robinson?
Actually, there is a blood drive on Wednesday at Quigley Memorial for the Red Cross, they're in need of blood, so just letting everybody know, if you have the gumption to go and donate some blood, you'd be welcome to join me at the Soldier's Home today.
Thank you, Council Robinson. Also tomorrow, here at 6:00 PM, there is a subcommittee meeting with the Chelsea Housing Authority regarding the inner development project happening at Central Ave. For those watching at home, it will also be recorded and televised. Everyone is welcome to attend, it will be happening here in the chambers at 6:00 PM. Anybody else? Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Madam President. Just a quick reminder, first of all, I want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving on Thursday.